If everyone will please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everyone to our meeting tonight. Before we get underway, there's a few preliminary matters that I'd like to go over. First, the fire exit is located to your left. In the event of a fire, you will be notified by an announcement. If you are notified, please move in a calm and orderly fashion to the exit. Do not use the elevator. Use either the north or the south doors to exit the building. The meetings are being recorded tonight by Donna, who's filling in for our secretary, Michelle. The minutes are for the purpose of a record of what takes place. They are not intended as to be a transcript of the meeting. So, in order to enable her to accurately reflect what is taking place, when you come to the podium, please identify yourself each time by your name and speak into the microphone. We will follow the items in the agenda in the order that they appear on the agenda. Extra copies of the agenda are available on the table at the door into the room. Once the case has been called, the applicant or their representative will come to the podium. Identify himself or herself, state their address, be sworn, and then present their case. During their presentation, the members of the board will have the opportunity to ask questions and engage in any discussion or make comments as appropriate. Once that process is completed, it will then be open to the public for input. We break the public input into three categories. First is those who wish to speak in favor of the application. Then we'll hear from those who wish to speak in opposition to the application. And lastly, we'll hear from those who wish to address the application but don't have a particular viewpoint either for it or against it. After that process is concluded, then the applicant or their representative can come back to the podium and follow up on anything that was raised during the public input of the hearing. Once they've had the opportunity to do that, the hearing will be closed and we'll move on to the next case. After all the cases have been called and heard, the board will take a short recess and then we will return to deliberate each case in the order of the applicants still present. No further input is allowed during the deliberation portion, but you're welcome to stay and listen if you would like. If you wish to leave and want to know what the results are, you can either get home in time to watch it on TV or you can call the zoning and planning department tomorrow at Town Hall after 9:00 a.m. and they will be glad to tell you what decision was reached. Having said all that, we will now be prepared to take the first case on our agenda.
Thank you. ZB 1406-1. Upon the matter request by Sinmaron Norton for an area variance to install a four-foot-high front yard fence exceeding maximum allowable height and linear footage on premises 15 Radcliffe Road in an R1 residential district.
Oh, sorry.
It's alright.
Good evening, folks. My name is Antonio Legaris. And Sinmaron is my fiancee. She's at work. I reside at 15 Radcliffe Road.
Okay. If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Go ahead.
Oh, we are requesting to put in a fence on our property. And we have three small children. And we want a fence for the safety of our children. As you know, on 15 Radcliffe Road and St. Paul Boulevard, it's a highly populated area with a lot of vehicles coming at various speeds. And we just feel that it'll be safe. We will feel safe if we had a fence put up so our children can play while not wander out into the street. That's our number-one concern is the safety of our children.
Anyone have any questions or comments for the applicant?
I'm wondering about the four foot. Does that four feet require a variance at that point? Or is it the lineage that requires a variance?
I think it's the lineage and the three and a half to four feet that requires the variance. What type?
So what's conforms to the code?
Three and a half feet high.
Three and a half feet?
Uh huh.
Oh. See, for over nine years, I thought it was four.
We learn something new every day.
That's right.
There are some of our neighbors that have a four-foot fence around their houses. For example, on 3565 St. Paul Boulevard, a gentleman has the same fence, and it's four foot.
Same fence that you want to install?
Yes, except his is ride and mine is vinyl.
And what's the purpose to go four feet rather than what's allowed at three and a half?
I just wanted a four-foot fence. I just thought it'd look, you know, it would look decent, you know, a little bit higher.
Keep your children in longer? They can scale three and a half, they can scale four.
Well, I really, you know, I went with a company outside fencing, so they have all the measurements and everything ready to go. We're just waiting for your approval.
And I'll bet four feet is a standard?
Four foot.
And three and a half feet requires?
Yes.
Custom-made and an expensive price?
Essentially, it's more expensive, yeah.
Right, to do three and a half.
And this is going to cost us about $4,500, as it is.
To put in a four-foot fence?
Yes, yes.
What style fence are we, are we talking chain link or are you talking a decorative fence?
It's vinyl. The back side of the house is going to be a chain link. And then in the front, it's all going to be vinyl.
Vinyl picket fence, right?
Vinyl picket fence, see-through, yes.
And that's what'll be exposed to St. Paul Boulevard?
Absolutely.
How about the backside facing the neighbor's front yard?
That is chain link, yes. And I actually have a copy from three of my neighbors. One directly across the street from me, right, one right next door, on both sides. And they do not mind if I get a fence. And they just signed it and wrote their address on here if you guys want to see it. I talked to them, they said it's a good idea.
If you could hand that to Mr. Vinette and he'll pass it around.
Sure.
Well, I looked at the property yesterday and, I'm sorry about... And I got to thinking, if I lived in that house and had small children, I would want a fence too.
Thank you.
So I'm completely in agreement with your request, even at this point.
Thank you. Yeah, like I said, it's a really busy street. Unfortunately, last year, we had a little dog and was hit on St. Paul. And the person kept driving, never stopped. But it's a very, very busy street and people fly down that street.
Do you have any photos of the type of fence you want to put in?
You know, I do not, I do not have any photos of mine, no. But it's black and it's very, it's a great-looking fence, very nice-looking.
I just worry that the look of the fence, the long spot on the... Behind your garage, it'll go all the way out to St. Paul Boulevard. You're saying it's going to be?
It actually stops just by the neighbor's at the front of his house. So you really can't see it. And then we're also debating if we're going to go out and switch and get a vinyl anyway. So we're not 100% sure if we're going to do the chain link or not.
In the back?
Right, right.
I mean, I could see it up to the back of your garage?
Uh huh.
And then if you're coming out toward the Boulevard and then over and around with a fancier fence to block in the yard, all one type of fence would probably look better than two types?
Yes, that's true. It's just very expensive, but you know, we're still in the process. Then we're talking, you know, another thousand dollars, so. It's something that we're still thinking about.
The only thing I'd ask, and I think this is a question for Donna. Based on the drawing, it looks like, you know, you want to pull the fence right up to St. Paul. But you recognize there are setbacks?
Yes, absolutely. So as soon as you go up to the sidewalk, three feet from the sidewalk.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, we did realize that.
Any other questions or comments? If we were to grant the variance based on it being the decorative fence all the way around, I know it's an extra expense. My concern is, you know, if it's decorative here, it should be decorative at least to the houses.
Yes.
You know, back here, chain link would be fine.
Right.
Because nobody's going to see it.
Right. And we're just going from, if you can see our garage, there is a door outside of garage in the back. So we're going from there up.
You're going from here?
Yes. Yeah, so it's not going all the way down.
It's not going all the way back behind the house?
Right.
Okay, but again, that, I think that that should all be decorative.
I mean, if that's, I mean, that's something that we can do if that's gonna...
Yeah, the only reason is, you know, coming from this side of St. Paul, it's going to look nice decorative coming from this side of St. Paul.
Sure, sure.
It's going to look different.
Yeah, I'm definitely willing to make amends with that.
Any other questions or comments from any members of the board? Well, just to comment, I'd be a little more comfortable if we had a picture of the fence. I guess we don't, but...
I can, upstairs, we have a folder. I can grab that, maybe you can look through it to show us which one.
Sure.
It's from a fence company. Maybe it would help all of us. I can grab that.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to do that now or later?
It's up to you. Do you want to do it right now?
Probably would, oh, I'm sorry. Someone is coming up from the audience that apparently has a folder.
Yeah, 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 thanks for that.
Probably another applicant.
Must be.
So is that aluminum?
Yes, it's aluminum, yeah. I couldn't afford the red.
So this is going to be very similar to the fencing that's installed on Cooper Road next to Genrick's and also that we approved down on Thomas Avenue?
Yes, yes.
That's a lot like that.
Yep.
Okay. The one question I have and it's a big concern of mine in reference to, there are some of these fences that are pointed tops versus the one that has the bar across the top with no points?
Yeah, this one has no points.
Okay.
Yeah, especially, you know, with our kids, you know.
Right. I just worry about people riding their bikes falling against it.
Right.
You know, a flat-top fence would be safer.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this application? Is there anyone who wishes to talk about this application? Alright, and we'll call the case closed. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
ZB 1406-5. Upon matter request by Julie Bruce to construct a 16-foot-by-16-foot rear yard deck with less than required rear and side street setbacks on a corner lot on premises 104 Maple Avenue in an R2 residential district.
Hello, I'm Julie Bruce and I reside at 104 Maple Avenue.
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Um, on, um... Sorry, I'm not a public speaker.
It's alright. You won't bite your head off, I promise.
On May 2nd, I was issued a building permit by the town for this 16-by-16 deck. Approximately 20 days later, the town called me and asked me to stop the production of the deck because they had issued my permit in error. I supplied all the documents and everything that was requested. And I followed through with the paperwork that they needed for the variance and to come in front of the town. Excuse me, I'm nervous. So, I'm just, I mean, I don't know if anyone's been near my house, but it's, you know, anywhere between 75 and 8% done, the deck is currently. I have a full fenced-in yard. I don't really know what else, you know, besides the fact that I've pretty much built. So I don't know, you know.
I just want to confirm, you have a fence around the yard and the fence conceals the entire deck?
Yes, pretty, yeah, it's a pretty majority of it, yes. There's a very small amount of the rails that you can see.
And this came up because it's a corner lot?
Um... What do you mean? Pardon me?
Did this issue of the setback arise because it's a corner lot?
No, well, yes. One of it, one is just regular rear, 30 feet, and doesn't have anything to do with corner. And the other, the side street, is because it's a corner lot, yes.
Because it's a corner lot?
Yeah, you're right.
I mean, obviously, it doesn't seem like it's going to be affecting anybody other than our code. In the, I mean, part of it is our own error on our department, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so if it doesn't have any... Person, it doesn't have any, it doesn't affect the neighbor to the left, I would think would be the most, would be concerned or possibly the one behind it. If there's no objections, would there be any objections from our department?
No, and when they came to speak to the person that they spoke to at the time, I think they were just looking to know when they did build this, basically, would they need a variance? And they were told at the time, no, they did not. There was, that was the only question or concern, obviously, on our part. Otherwise, the construction of the deck has been looked at by the building inspector and everything else with the deck isn't compliant with the code.
He did give her a permit, right?
Yes.
Yes.
I did bring that with you if you'd like to see it. I don't know if you guys want to...
If I'm looking at and understanding your instrument survey map correctly, you have a 90-foot-deep lot. And 33 feet is your front setback. And then your house is 25 feet. So if, without a variance, you'd be allowed to have a two-foot deck?
I, I, I'm not quite sure because I don't have the map in front of me. But what I can say is that when I did the measurements from the end of the deck to the rear fence, I had exactly 17 feet from between my fence and the end of the deck. Like, not to the house, but the back, back far end of the deck. So that's exactly how far the footage is.
So, in order for you to have a deck, like, probably at least 50% of the people in town have a deck or something in the back, you'd need a variance other than, unless you were just putting in a two-feet thing that would let you stand and look out over the 30-feet setback?
Yes, I gathered that after they had told me that I needed the variance for the 30-foot setback.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone? Oh! Okay, you want to step up and give us your name and address, please?
Hi, I'm Nicole Tebow. I live Kitty Corner from Julie. I can't see why this would ever be an issue. Her yard is fenced in. It's not bothering anybody. It's not an eyesore for anyone. And it was basically just built for the enjoyment for her family. So, and she did it all the right way. So I can't see why this would be any concern to anybody else.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone wish to speak in opposition to this application? Would anyone like to talk about the application without taking a position?
This is kind of a mixed comment. I've lived, I'm the person who's right next door at 108 Maple, Michael Black.
Oh, okay.
And the two concerns I had, I was asked by a couple neighbors who didn't really want to speak tonight. They're expressing a concern about the deck. And by the code, you can pretty much build a deck almost any height you want. You could have a balcony deck and coming out of it, as long as it met the setback rules. One of the concerns that the neighbors is because of the height of the deck and how compact the yards are in that neighborhood, that a deck, anything above, like a foot off the ground, literally puts it above, or when you're standing on the deck, puts you at a height that you're looking into people's backyards. That was a concern of some of the neighbors. I live next door, and while that's a concern, my wife is undergoing chemo right now. She was a little concerned about privacy and things like that. And we've talked to Julie and it's really not a, not a big issue. In fact, if anything, we would consider, if we thought it was going to be an issue, we'd apply for a variance and get a little bit taller fence instead of a six-foot fence, which we had got built. Would do an eight-foot fence. Or something like, or put a trellis up, that temporary trellis to have, you know, morning glories, I can't think of the word, the plants grow up there.
Right.
The real concern I have is, and this is more of a criticism, and it's not for your board because you're finally getting this, but Julie, with the process of her being aired, gets you to permit without having in the process. Three years ago, I wanted to build a deck, very similar to what Julie had. When I came to the town and talked, asked them what I needed to do, I pretty much was told the process. And then was pretty much explained to me that it was not likely that this would even get approved. And it was very discouraged about me even applying for a deck. So I knew what the process was, which had me a little irked and things. We chose instead to go with a, you know, just pretty much a patio-type arrangement off the back. There are already existing stairs that came with the house and we just put, you know, a patio down. I guess the question comes in is like, it seems that it wasn't fair to her that she was issued a permit right outright without having to go through a variance and error. And also, I, as a homeowner, was told, you shouldn't even apply for that. And that bothered, or discouraged in applying because they said the process was difficult and I would probably not get it approved anyhow. That's, that's my comment. And again, I'm just expressing a couple of the neighbors' concerns and that. Her building a deck, it doesn't really bother me any, and it's fine for that. Again, it's, there's no height restriction in the code, so it really wouldn't, you know, be something you could say, no, you can't do anyhow.
Alright, well, just to address the concern that you raised, because I think that is a concern that should be addressed. And since people do watch us on TV, they can disseminate the news that... I don't think any one of us would presume to speak for what the action of the board would be. I know when I'm asked, you know, what's the board likely to do? I, my response is, put in an application and we'll consider it. And all seven of us deliberate and then we make a decision. We don't always agree in our decision, but we all get along. And we try and strike a balance between the code provisions, which are intended to preserve the character of the town and the neighborhoods, and the needs of individual property owners to be able to fully enjoy their property in a way that's customary and consistent with the character of the neighborhoods and the towns. So it's really not, I don't think anyone can presume to say what we're likely to grant or what we're not likely to grant because there have been things that I would have thought might have been approved that haven't been. And then there have been things that I thought wouldn't have been approved that have been. And until it comes in front of us and all seven of us have the opportunity to look at it and consider it, no one can say what's likely or not likely to happen. And little variations between one application and another. Just because one application is approved for a deck doesn't necessarily mean that the next application for a deck will be approved, or chickens, or whatever else it might be. It all depends on the individual application, what the considerations are, what the neighborhood location is, what the configuration of the lot might be, what neighbors think, and those kinds of things. So I hope you enjoy your patio instead of a deck. And, but to anyone else who's contemplating a patio versus a deck, our decision shouldn't be presumed in advance.
Well, I'm just, I'm sorry, sir. And I just want to follow up on what the chairman said, is that this was issued in error. And I think the most important thing we wanted to do was to make sure that, even though we caught it, it was caught in time. And it was able to, thankfully, because of the calendar, we were able to notice it in the proper way. And it could come before the setting where you were able to come speak pro or con in that, on the item at question. So we do apologize, obviously, you know, mistakes happen. And then I do want to say that when things do come up that may come before the board, that is not by no means the town's policy to tell people that they're prejudged one way or the other. So I can't speak for what happened three years ago. But I can't say that that's certainly not something that we do here currently. Well, I appreciate that. And I appreciate your explanation because that's really the way it should work. Everybody should get the fair shake. And I appreciate that because, again, as I said, it was, initially, it was really fuming, you know, of the sense. And I couldn't believe that, you know, there wasn't, you know, any type of hearing on it. And then she told me they got the, you know, the notice. So I guess the thing is, I appreciate the fact of the transparency issue. That should be the issue.
That's why we're here, and that's why we're on TV. The other thing I'll tell you is that the privacy thing, privacy issue goes both ways. The higher that deck gets built, the less privacy the people on the deck have. They're like on a stage for all the neighborhood to see. Which wouldn't be my idea of having a deck put on the back of the house and be for all my neighbors to see. So they might put up some trellises or something that, you know, will give them the privacy and the, and the height. But that's hopefully is something that, you know, neighbors would talk about with each other and work out over time.
Well, I appreciate that. Appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you for coming and addressing us. That was helpful to us to hear that.
Thank you.
Thank you. So anyone else that wishes to address this application? Did the applicant wish to respond to any of the comments? Okay.
Um, for the height, I tried to go as low as I could to keep it down because I do want some privacy myself. Unfortunately, when we measured, we didn't take into consideration the few extra boards that would have to build it up, so it got a little higher. Approximately like five or six inches a little higher than I wanted to go. I do have a plan on trying to figure out a good way to do privacy. I have a very good relationship with Mike Black and his wife. So they always give me hints and stuff like, you know, what you can do to help with it, you know, stuff like that. So I think our relationship is good where we can figure privacy out and stuff like that. And I would never want to interfere on them as just as much as I wouldn't want them to do that the same. So just so you guys know, there was no bad intention at any, at any point for the deck to be too high to interfere with other people's privacy.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll close the hearing with respect to that matter and move on to the next item on our agenda.
ZB 1406-2. Upon the matter request by Walter and Jennifer Strasberg for an area variance to construct a garage addition with less than required rear setback on premises 274 Perdav in an R2 residential district.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Walter Strasberg. My wife, Jennifer Strasberg. We live at 274 Perdav.
If you could raise your right hands. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
We're here tonight, as Donna said, applying for a variance to add just approximately three feet to the rear of our existing detached garage. It is existing. It is three to, well, one foot to three foot off the property line adjacent to our neighbor on Aragon. The garage predates the house and its construction, from what we can tell and from what the neighbors who've been there quite a bit longer than us have said. The addition will be three feet to the rear of it and approximately a three-by-three-foot square of that is what would actually be within the four-foot property setback requirement on the back of our property. So it's just that small area that's outside the current code. Did look at provisions to kind of notch that corner of the garage out. It was looking kind of odd. Kind of wanted to preserve the character of the garage as well. Some cleaner lines. Okay, if any, or don't know if any of you care to see photos of the existing. I know a few of you were out there this weekend. But the current rear section of the garage consists of about a three-foot stairwell that has multiple roof lines. Doesn't really fit the other lines of the garage with the dormers and the pitches. So trying to remove that stair section and even out the roof line to match the existing just for a little better aesthetics. Again, it's only a three-foot addition to a 20-foot structure, mainly because I'd like to be able to get a full-size vehicle in there. Currently, the way you have to shimmy around the front of the vehicle isn't very good. Should you ever be in there, you need to get out there quick, get out of the garage quick. It's not too convenient. So would like to add a couple feet on to facilitate better egress out of the garage itself should I need to get out quick.
So basically, you want to modernize the garage that predates your house?
In terms of matching the roof lines, somewhat, yes, but actually, I think it's going to bring it more into character with the majority of the structure that's already there, just evening out, bringing the roof lines consistently down rather than the multiple pitches that are on the stair end of it. We did, I've got a list of 20-something neighbors, pretty much everyone that I went around to was in favor of it. We have a letter from the neighbor directly behind that's going to be impacted the most by the addition. He was in favor of it. Can't wait to help out if we do get the approval, so.
Make sure you take him up on the offer.
Oh, not a doubt.
I got a question for you right here, because I've known this house for a long time. We're in that corner, corner of Aragon and Pert. Now, you mentioned attached garage.
Detached, I'm sorry.
Oh, detached, maybe that's what you said.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Because I'm looking at this, I'm going, I'm seeing, looking at it from Pert Avenue, and trying to figure out where exactly is this additional footage going to be? Now, this, there's a garage over here. Is that the one we're talking about?
Yes, that's the one at the, basically, at the bottom of the page, there's a hatch section on that. That's where the three feet is being added to. I'm sorry, it was in red on the original. I should have provided color copies for all of them.
Our driveway is on Aragon.
So this, this block of land right here is your neighbor's?
No, that's ours, that we're off to the right side.
Oh, this is where the variance comes in?
Yep, our neighbor's driveway is off to the right of the garage, if you're looking at it.
Okay, I apologize. I just got very confused.
No, that's all right.
Oh, it's eastern red now. Thank you, that's very helpful.
Yes, on the plot plan, the neighbor's driveway is to the right-hand side, basically right along the property line. There's a small section of landscaped garden bed that we maintain between his driveway and the side of the garage. There is a fence there that we will be taking three feet out of, but other than that, there will be nothing else that's changed on the fence. There is some minor issues with watershed from his driveway into our yard, so we'll be doing a couple courses of cement block to improve the drainage away from the structure. Currently, it's built on wood, right on the dirt. There's no, at least on the rear portion. There was an addition to that stairwell done ages ago in poor form, and I could show you the photos. It's pretty well shot at this point, so we're looking to get that improved and get a fresh coat of paint.
So the neighbor was going to help you? So there's no animosity here?
Not whatsoever.
Okay.
No, like I said, every neighbor that I spoke with was glad to see that we were doing work, glad to see the work that we've done elsewhere around the house, everything from the garden beds to the other garden shed that we have out back. They're all quite in agreeance with it.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Is there anyone who wishes to address the application without taking a position in favor or against? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to that application and move on to the next item on our agenda.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
CB 1406-3, upon the request by Kathy Newcombe for an area variance to install a front and side yard fencing exceeding maximum allowable height, less than required front and rear setbacks on premises 159 Sea Cliff Road, also known as 159 Treelawn Drive, and a through lot in an R3 residential district.
Hello, my name is Kathy Newcombe, and I live at 159 Treelawn/Sea Cliff.
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say today will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
So I'm asking for a few different items. The first is to, I'm a new resident of Sea Cliff, and I inherited a chain link fence around the entire perimeter. Some of it was in good condition, and some of it was in really poor condition. I prefer wood, and in the front, I'm very close to the road, about, the fence is about three feet from the road, and my front area is 10 feet. So my windows are very close to the road, and I would like a picket fence, dog-eared picket fence in the front, and I would like it to be four feet high to give me a little more privacy, and, because I have a dog. And the front fence would wrap around to the front door, which is my only door on that level, so it would wrap around the front of the yard, and there's a very large tree at the southwest corner. The picket would meet at the tree, because there are some issues with the tree roots. They didn't think that they could get all the way around the exterior of the tree as it is now, and it really is an eyesore. And then on the south side, the picket would gradually rise to six feet, and six feet would begin at the front foundation of the house, and go all along the south side to the back, which is the Sea Cliff side, but only to where the chain link is now.
It'll be going down the hill? It's quite, it will be going almost to the bottom of the hill?
Yes, were you the person that was there yesterday talking to David Voorhees?
I was there Saturday.
Oh.
Saturday, and I did, is David the gentleman with the motorcycle to the right of you?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, so he, just as an aside, he did sign a letter, as well as my neighbor on the north side, though at this point, I will not be replacing the fence on the north side. Her yard is very, very tidy, which is more than I can say for my neighbor on the other side, but a fence would really, really do the trick, and then I wouldn't have to worry about what I'm looking at. And I bought a picture that I got online, because he said that some, someone from the town was very concerned that the person that I hired may not be able to do a good job of getting down the hill, so this is what I chose. It's called parallel rather than graduated. So I have that picture, and...
If you could pass that around, that'd be...
Sure.
Nice, thank you.
And I have a picture of what the front picket would look like, as well as the side. The side would be solid, so it would be completely solid at six feet, and David Voorhees is fine with that. Oh, and, well, and this is a sketch of what the graduation would look like from picket to solid.
When I was heading for your place over here, hello, when I was heading for your house yesterday, I said to my wife, "Now, this is going to be interesting, because we have Sea Cliff and we have Treelawn, and I'm not sure which is the front and which is the back." This is me talking. No, I know your official address is Sea Cliff, right?
Right.
But...
No, no, well, I guess the tax rules have me on Sea Cliff, but I don't have any access at all on Sea Cliff.
I know, it's a hill.
A hill.
And to the town's credit, they put a sign for the variance there, as well as on the other side. So she said, "Well, how do we, so once we saw the hill," she said, "Well, how do we get to the front of the house?" I said, "Well, we have to go up and around and follow Treelawn around." So we did that, and it was the best thing I could have done, because a whole bunch of neighbors were out walking around, enjoying the nice weather, and I pull up, and we had what amounted to be a mini-town meeting. I don't know if you were aware of that, but there were about five or six people, all standing around the car, talking about the situation, and they were all in favor of what you wanted to do, which I thought was pretty good. And then when the meeting was over, everybody just went their own way. It was like a meeting. I didn't call it, it just happened. It was a nice neighborhood, nice people, and I think what, you know, if you need a little support on this, why, they're on your side, and therefore so mine.
Well, I like to think, and my neighbor on the other side is really aware that I like to improve my home. That gives me a lot of pleasure. I also like the privacy, but and I like the neighbors, as you say, they're great, and a few neighbors came by to say that the town was, the town came to look, and I didn't have anything to hide, as long as that my neighbor on the south side is fine with a high fence. He benefits from that as well. So it's an expense, but I honestly find it an eyesore to have to look at all of that, and so I just felt that it was up to me then to expend the money to give myself the view that I want, and so he's fine with the fence. You know, we have a, we have a neighborly relationship, at least.
I can see that, yeah. Almost like a little association.
Yeah, it really is. You have to mind your peas and ques living there, I think, but, yeah, and people did, a number of people asked when I first put the sign up, what the sign was for, and so they're aware.
Good. Anyone else have any questions or comments?
Oh, I just have one question. I understand why you want to go to the salad fence to the, to the south, but why six feet instead of four?
Because I don't want to see what the view is. Would you like a few pictures?
I was there yesterday.
Oh, yeah, I just don't want to see it. And I, knowing the expanse, it's not as if everything will change in the next year. It's not like having a yard next door where maybe there is a truck full of metal debris and a mountain of concrete debris and other assorted pieces of furniture, and it's not one yard, it's like five yards, and so I, I think that it's, it's huge for him to overcome all of the property that he's got to deal with, so if it was a six-foot fence, then out of sight, out of mind, as far as I'm concerned. I, I think, I, I have asked, how, how is it that that is allowed? I mean, in the back, on the Sea Cliff side, I did try to bushwhack down to Sea Cliff one day, and there, because of all the concrete at the back of one of the buildings, that there has already been an obvious avalanche of those pieces of concrete. But mind you, he is apologetic about the mess, but, yeah, I just want to sit in my yard and enjoy my garden and not have to, I don't want my vision to encompass what's not happening next door, and I don't want it to become personal. I just want a nice fence to look at. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just, I'm wondering if you're looking for a permanent solution to maybe a temporary problem. If there's a code violation issue, maybe there's a different avenue.
Well, I think, I think there have been some visits, but I, when I look at it, I, I think that it's monumental. He's got buildings, and he didn't just move there. He's got many buildings, and he's told me that he's got four or so buildings that he's got to deal with, figure out whether he's going to bulldoze them, and he's in the construction business. He brings a lot of debris home, by the looks of it, but I don't know how the concrete pieces, maybe that was a foundation or something, so the foundation was then chopped up, and now there is a concrete hill in the back. I just don't see it, and if, to please me, it would happen this summer, but that's not going to happen, and so if we had a fence between us, and I could look at my pretty fence, and he can figure out what he's going to do with that expanse of property, then, you know, we're separate individuals, and that's what I would like.
Just for clarification, over here, the six-foot fence is going to be six feet at the front of your, at the front of your house, so the six-foot, except for the transitional period, or the transitional, I guess you'd say, segment, you're not going to have a six-foot fence in front of your house. It's going to be at the front corner of your house going back. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And then it's going to go down the hill, so it's really, just so you know, and it was public record, we did issue him permit to do two new buildings a couple of years ago, I believe, quite a fancy home, and also an office shop area, an office to store, plus a place to store some fancy cars. He did have and does have a plan. Unfortunately, he hasn't brought it, brought to it yet, but I do know he did spend a lot of money for architect's plan and the whole bit for a beautiful spot.
Well, he did show me the survey, because there were some, some survey issues at one point, and he showed me the survey.
Right, how long have you been at the house?
Just since March.
Okay, yeah, it was a while ago. It was a year to two years ago, and again, the plans were beautiful. The home was beautiful. Now, I spoke with him the other day about it, and he's, you know, it is on hold for personal reasons, I guess, so, but he did have permits, and that, I believe permits were issued.
We'd granted a variance.
I don't know if you ever got that far. You were, you granted a variance.
The plans were, the variance was included, the plans were worked out, maybe...
But a permit wasn't issued, no.
Okay, right, so, and that was more than a year ago, so he'd have to apply again, right?
So is there a caution in there somewhere?
No, no.
Well, just that he's trying to improve the property.
Give you some encouragement that he's looking to do something someday.
Oh, he did say that.
Yes, okay.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in favor of the application? Anyone wish to speak in opposition to the application? Does anyone wish to speak to the application without expressing a view one way or the other? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing and move on to the next case. Thank you.
CB 1406-4, upon matter of request by Culver Terrace LLC for an area variance to install new signage exceeding maximum allowable square footage and with less than required front setback on premises 27, 27 Culver Road, also known as 27th 45 Culver Road, the Culver Terrace Apartments, and an R5 residential district.
Good evening to the board. Thank you for giving us an opportunity to come here. My name is Vinod Luthra. I'm the managing member of Culver LLC, and joining me is Sangita... And joining me is Sangita Aurora.
Sangita Aurora, I'm the agent for Culver Terrace.
Okay, if you could both raise your right hands, do you swear affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So you'd like to replace your sign?
Yes, we'd like to, we have acquired this property about six months ago, and we have been trying to improve the area of this, of this particular property. And it has a sign which was built somewhere in late 60s, is about five-by-three sign, is about three feet away from the road, and we want, and it's about 17-inch post, we want to replace with same size, a new sign. I hope you have seen the application, we have submitted one, and basically, we have looked at the sign, and it is quite dated, and we need to add another strip at the bottom to show our website, about eight inch. We have owned about 15, no, 24 community in Western New York, and this is our standard thing which we have done with every community. And we are hoping that we can get the variance to leave the sign the way it has been, and one of the objection, one of the concern was, will it pose a safety? And we have given a picture on page five, when you stand out, the sign has been there for 50 years, and there is no problem whatsoever. On page five, you'll see this picture showing north side of Culver Road, where the sign is there, and you can see very easily all the vehicular traffic coming in. So we are requesting a variance to put a new sign at the same location, put a new vinyl cap up on the top of the post, and put it at the bottom at eight-inch website location. And all these things would not make any concern of the safety wise for our resident or for the people coming in.
Anyone have any questions or comments for the applicant?
The, the question, the width of the sign is the width of the old sign and the width of the new sign?
Yes.
The same?
Same.
The same.
So the, the overall square footage of the sign is the same?
Yes, sir.
What's, what we're talking about then tonight is moving it a little closer to the road?
No, the same location.
The same location.
Same location, and I, I see a picture here of this old sign, the old sign.
Right.
And then a blue arrow pointing to the road.
Yeah, that is the distance we are taking there, right now, the present sign is 3.3 feet, and we'll leave the same place.
Oh, so it's going to be in the same place?
Same place.
Same post, we're going to put a vinyl footing, vinyl casing.
So it's going to be the same post for the same sign?
We might change, of course, rather, we may have to change the post and put a white casing on the top.
Right, but basically it's going to be the same post with the same sign, well, different sign.
A different sign.
But in the same location as the old sign.
Absolutely.
And the reason you need a variance is because the old sign doesn't comply with the zoning ordinance as it is now.
Right now, yes.
Okay, all right.
And they're adding three and a half more square foot.
You're going to add three and a half feet to put a website address?
The bottom rider.
For all the people who use websites instead of Yellow Pages?
Yes, there's no, there's no Yellow Pages left.
Just about everybody these days, yes.
It's YP.com now.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions or comments?
Make a comment, it, it looks very nice.
Thank you.
You can actually see it. This is probably why you want to do it, right?
We, as far as you know, we own other four properties now, we have been in this town for the last three years now, and I want to compliment the board and Donna in particular for all the help and cooperation you folks have given. We own Hill Court, Ivy Ridge, we bought Hathaway, and also Ranico Village. In addition, we bought 1164 Ivy, uh, Ridge Road, East Ridge Road.
All right.
So this is our sixth addition right now. And we really enjoy the time here in terms of what the town can do for us.
So you're like an around-the-quart housing authority?
Absolutely.
Providing housing for people in town?
Well, I think we try to do it market rate, and we try to get the best value.
Sounds good, all right. Any other questions or comments? Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here to speak in opposition to this application? And one who wishes to talk about the application without expressing a view one way or the other? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing.
Before, you might want to mention the letter from the county, because it's the county road, and they, they have no problem as long as the sign doesn't, the post don't go, does not go any further towards the road. You just got that today, dated June 2nd.
Yeah, okay, so we'll incorporate the county's letter into the record of the meeting as explained by Donna, and with that, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter, and we will be in recess until 8 o'clock.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, and we are all present. The next application is the application with respect to 104 Maple Avenue. This also is a type two action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
I'll make a motion that the matter of ZB 1406-5, that we approve the requested variance, that the applicant has shown that there really isn't any feasible other means that could be done in the way of a deck, other than perhaps putting in a patio. It certainly is no undesirable change in the neighborhood, and the neighbors pretty much have agreed to that. It's not a substantial request. The fence is entirely, or the yard is entirely fenced in. As I mentioned, there's no adverse physical or environmental impact. I guess you could say it's self-created because they want to have a deck, but so be it. They're looking to improve their use of their yard. Again, I recommend we approve the variance.
I'll second. Mike?
Joe.
Mike or Joe?
Joe.
Joe? I thought I heard you first. That's because I'm probably better at laughter. Any discussion concerning this motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, and we continue to all be present. The next application for our consideration tonight relates to 159 Sea Cliff, 159 Tre Lawn Drive. This is a type two action for secret purposes as well. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
I'll make a motion on reference to 274 Pert Avenue, the garage.
No, we're on Tre Lawn.
Tre Lawn, okay, I'm sorry.
Pert left, so we're going to deal with that at the end.
I apologize.
They're present.
They're present.
Oh, you are present. Oh, I'm sorry. When I looked out, I didn't, my apologies. So we're going, scratch that. We're on 274 Pert Avenue.
All right.
This is also a type two action for secret purposes.
And I'll make that motion. 274 Pert Avenue, to grant the motion, it is not a substantial variance. It will not have an adverse effect to the environment. The difference in the, actually, in building this new section of garage, he's going to improve the water runoff. He mentioned that with the neighbor's driveway, away from the neighbor's driveway. And there is no adverse effect, other than that, to the environment. It is a self-created issue because although it is and it isn't, because it isn't his fault that the back of the garage got old and started falling apart and deteriorating. So it's really not self-created. Based on the criteria, I think we should approve it. That's it.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no votes opposed, and no unsubstaining, and we are all still present. Now we'll take up 159 Sea Cliff, 159 Tre Lawn Drive. This is, as I said, a type two action for secret purposes. And does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
I'd like to make a motion, then, that we do this, that we approve this variance with the following findings. First of all, the, what she's proposing for a fence is not going to change the character of the neighborhood. If anything, it'll improve it. Secondly, the, there are really not, the alternate, alternatives that would be considered would probably really not solve the problem. So you come up with the best plan for this, for this area that would suit your purposes. So there really wouldn't need to be alternatives for this. The substantiality of the request is, it is substantial, but it's because of the neighborhood and the topography of the land, it's not that, it's not that out of whack. It's not unusual. It's not excessive. There would be no physical or environmental conditions that would be changed by putting this fencing up. And if the situation is self-created, it was actually done before you purchased the house, and for what, your motives for having the fence is what reasonably anybody would like to do. And that is to improve what they look at every day when they get up and enjoy their neighborhood and their home. So with that in mind, I move that we approve this variance.
I'll second. Any discussion?
I'd just like to add to this the amazing support of the neighbors. It was such a unique thing. I wish I had it on video. But congratulations. You have a great neighborhood up there. That's all I want to say.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, and we continue to all be present. The last application on our agenda is relating to 2727 Culver Road. This is also a type two action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make an application with respect, or a motion with respect to this application?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the variance requested for ZB 1406-4 based on the following findings. First, the request is not substantial in that this is exactly where the previous sign was, and they're just looking to put it, you know, pretty much where it was, except eight additional inches on the bottom. It will not affect an undesirable change in the neighborhood, again, because it's going to be maintaining the sign that's already existing, just making it eight inches shorter, or inches more along the bottom. The benefit can be achieved by other means, but they're not really feasible because if they push it back, it won't really be visible from the street. And there's no adverse environmental impact. And to the extent this is self-created, I would say that because it's prior existing structure, they're just keeping up with it, and they didn't put it there originally. They just inherited it that way. So it's not self-created.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, and we continue to all be present. I believe we have a table item at the end of our agenda, case number ZB 1405-1, which relates to property at 66 Wiesner Road. My recollection is this prop, this application was adjourned with the consent of the applicant at the last meeting. Is that correct? All right. So if I'm correct, and our counsel will tell me if I'm not, since it was at his consent, there's no automatic action that's deemed to be taken by our failure to either approve it or deny it within sixty days. Is that correct?
Right. And I think at this time, there's actually no action pending before this board any longer with this application. So I think it can be withdrawn from the agenda.
Oh. Can we have a motion to withdraw the matter from the agenda, then? I'll move that. Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. We're all still present, and that item will be withdrawn from our agenda. We also received, I believe, by email, minutes for the April and May meetings. Did everyone have an opportunity to review those?
Yes.
Are there any comments with respect to the April meeting minutes? I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as prepared for the April meeting. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. Mr. LaPerry, with respect to the May meeting minutes, I'll move that we approve those minutes. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion also carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, and no abstentions. Last item for us to consider is a proposal that Mr. Thomas distributed tonight that would call for fourteen car magnet signs that would say zoning board, that would be issued to the members of this board to affix to our cars when we're driving around neighborhoods, looking at properties, and sometimes walking onto properties, so that people who are in the neighborhood don't necessarily wonder what is going on and who we might be and who these strange people are walking around their neighborhood. This is not something that we can direct the town to provide, but it's something that we can indicate that we feel would be helpful, and then that would have to be considered by others who would make, ultimately determine whether or not the town is interested in doing that. But in the past, when we've expressed an interest in having things that we feel would be helpful, those have been passed along. So.
I just wanted to make a comment on this?
Absolutely.
I went to East Ridge Printing up here in Portland and Ridge, and got the price from them. Now, these signs are, they're not awfully big. Still one on each side of the car, and you're golden, or in the back, or whatever. But they do charge by the letter. So your Arundecoyt Zoning Board of Appeals was going to be about a hundred bucks, just because of the size of the sign, and it would cover the entire car. So I just, I thought zoning board said enough. And their price, that's where the price came from for this.
Okay. Is that for all the signs?
That's the entire fourteen signs, yeah.
I think it's a common sense proposal that, well, we'll figure out what it says or how it looks, but we'll get something. It makes a lot of sense, just for public safety and, you know, transparency reasons. To have folks parked outside of someone's house, and they don't know exactly what they're doing and who they are, that's a pretty sensible thing to.
Now, being just a proposal, I don't know if it requires any kind of a vote or anything. It's a...
Like, I gather, is there anyone on the board who feels that isn't something that makes sense? Then I would think, it seems that we have a unanimous consensus of the board. I'm sure we'll work something out.
Okay, great.
Is there any other business to come before the board tonight? Seeing none, we are adjourned.